Five thirty, so let's call this meeting to order and you want to do a roll call?
Sure. Oregon?
Yes.
Randy?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
And Tish?
Sure. Okay, can you get a motion to approve the April agenda?
Sure.
Second.
Randy, Jim, I, discussions. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify. Okay, all right, approval of the March minutes. Can I get a motion to approve minutes?
No for approval.
Gordon, and second?
Second.
Steve, um, discussion?
Just with adding under Connecticut candidate's presentation.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, got that.
Presenting.
Yeah, anything else? Okay, all right, all those in favor of approving the March minutes with that correction of the word presentation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify. All right. Um, moving on to the March treasures report, can you get a motion to accept it?
No.
Jim? Second?
Second.
Randy? All right, discussion, questions? The, uh, only question I had was, you know the fire department budget's half spent already?
Yeah.
It's at forty-eight percent. Um, that was the only thing that I noticed.
It was all like your box.
Yeah. All right, any other comments or discussion, questions? All right, I'm hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify. All right, acceptance of the April, spring election results, I actually don't know if we need to do a formal motion because
No, not really.
certified the, uh, the results. But I, by my estimate, we got a sixty-four percent turnout, if my math is correct, which is always questionable, but, uh, I think a sixty-four percent turnout is pretty, pretty awesome. Um, so, very good, and congratulations to Randy and to Charon, who we have sitting in back here, who'll be joining the board. And, uh, as we say, adios to Gordon. Um, anyway, so I think we can move on.
We accept it.
Um, well, I guess, let me ask, does someone want to make a motion to accept the, uh, spring election report? I don't know if it's too necessary.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
You're right.
It's all, yes.
Yeah, everybody in favor of accepting it, just signify by saying aye.
Aye.
But nobody has a problem with it, right? Okay, all right, now, discussion of possible action on proposal for civil engineering survey construction services. We have to win our packet, um, for, um, purposes of our minutes, um, I had called AECom, which I reported last month, I had called AECom, um, I think three times, and never got a return phone call. Um, Steve also, uh, called.
I spoke with, uh, Rickard Milky, yeah, I'll talk about that, you know, after, you know, we proceed.
Okay, all right, um, so we have our proposals, and we have, uh, our, um, Dan St. Pierre and Dave Graholsky.
Glodolsky.
Glodolsky, my apologies, um, here with us to answer questions. How would the board like to proceed? Has everyone had a chance to take a look at these?
Much of it that I can understand.
Yeah, it's difficult because they're not really apples to apples.
That's correct.
Quite different sort of way of approaching it, I don't know if, perhaps Dan could speak to how we should look at it.
Perhaps I could, I suspect that you might want me to.
Yeah.
Give us, uh, maybe you can help us clarify, uh,
Well, I'm gonna, I, I made some, some notes here, and I'll go through these one at a time, and I just have some, I mean, they're both, um, good propos- proposals, I think, but I just have some questions on them. Uh, Dan's is a little different than Dave's. So with POBs, everything on page three is fine, page four. Um, I just made a note that we, uh, will need the driveways, we should specify that we need the driveways surveyed. I'm assuming that was the intent, but it wasn't specifically noted.
And you're going through PoB, right?
I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, this is PoB.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and as far as the construction documents, uh, um, Dan, uh, has a little different, uh, the way he's detailed the, the, the plan is, is a little different than, um, than Dave, in that it's not as roadway plan oriented, it's more site development oriented. So, I, I think the intent is there, but it's not real clear exactly what the plan, uh, is. I, I think Dan knows what the plan is, but it, but it's not clear in according to this. For example, a roadway plan will typically have roadway cross, typical cross sections and, and cross sections and plan sheets and, and, uh, I mean, he's got the specifications noted here, that's good, uh, detail sheets is good. It's just a little, um, I think we probably end up with the same looking plan with either one. It's just the way Dan describes it here is a little different. Streetlights are not noted specifically, and maybe should be as far as the detail sheets.
Still looking at PoB. You're still looking at PoB?
Still going through POBs, yes, I'm still on page five.
Okay.
Permit preparation, Dan has, uh, this, uh, notice of intent with the DNR. And this is something that, uh, I believe, I mean, you have it in here, Dan. Is that something we know we're going to need if we do your proposed scope, or?
Yes, because just the ditch grading alone will add up to more than acre disturbance, so we wouldn't need to apply for an NOI.
Okay, and that's, the only reason I ask that is because that's, that's noted as, uh, may be needed, and Dave's, I don't know that later, but, uh, you know, that it would be extra work, so that isn't included in his. Yeah, and then the last paragraph here, they just, uh, Dan's refers to, uh, um, client review, and in this case, there is no other client, there's only the municipality. I can share all these notes for, with Kathy later, if you guys want. For construction services, uh, Dan doesn't go specifically into managing the bid, which is something important that we would need you to do. So that would need to be included. And that may be just a matter of we weren't necessarily clear that we wanted that service. I, I won't be sure why you didn't include it, but.
I do want to make a comment about electrical real fast.
Okay.
We do not have electrical engineers on our staff, so that would be an additional cost to hire an electrical engineer to move forward.
With regards to the streetlights?
With regard to the streetlights, probably easier if you guys did it direct, um, but we can definitely coordinate with them to make that process, but that is not included specifically.
Okay.
Okay, and then, and then lastly, on page seven, uh, meetings and site visits. Uh, Dan isn't as specific as far as the frequency of site inspections as, as Dave is. It's just not broken down and itemized as much, uh, as far as the level of inspection, so that's not quite as clear there.
I just have a question here, okay, in terms of the request for proposal that you received, was lighting, you know, discussed?
Uh, lighting was mentioned, but we specifically left it out because, like I said, we do not have electrical engineers on our staff.
Yeah. It, it, it probably would have been helpful if you had gotten a formal RFP, but I don't have a, an RFP. We don't have somebody on staff to create an RFP or oversee it, so it was a phone call and a couple of emails.
Yeah, and I think that's why there's, there's some differences here are one of the reasons. So that's all I had for comments on POBs, and for grammars. As far as, uh, one thing that, and I'm not familiar with this, but one thing that Dan mentioned was, as far as the DNR permitting goes, if we go in and, and, and remove down to base, basically reconstruct the base, it's going to open a can of worms as far as the storms, maybe requiring higher level storm sewer treatment. And, I don't know, Dave, maybe you could comment on that, what you know, or?
Yeah, if, if our intent is to put back what's there, that's really not called land of servants, and an NOI wouldn't be needed. Now, if we're doing ditching, and it adds up to be more than an acre, which I doubt that it would, you know, then an NOI would be needed. It's, it's included in my proposal, whether we have to do an NOI with a DNR or not. I'm gonna guess that we don't need to.
Yeah.
Because we're pretty much, I'm assuming from what I've been hearing, is that pretty much putting back what's there, we just want to improve the pavement, improve the drainage. Uh, I know there's a block that's bad, do a weekend and improve that, and with that, we probably don't hit the limits for the DNR permit. I bet it's a big deal either way. They, they wouldn't require any post-construction stormwater management anyways, you know, and all the during-construction type erosion control would be included either, anyways, so. I don't see it as a big deal either way.
Yeah, it, I guess I'm not sure whether, personally, whether a permit is, uh,
Yeah, I just did four of them, I just did four of them very similar, and, and we did not need a, a DNR permit.
In other municipalities around here?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, my, you know, I, I mean, I guess I'm anticipating we'll do swaling, which you're calling ditching, I'm calling swaling, which I think is a little less intrusive.
Sure.
I don't know.
More resident friendly and.
More resident friendly, how about that, yeah.
Swell along the edge of the road.
Yeah, but, but, you know, a, a good percentage of the houses, of the residents already have it, they already have swaling, because we've been actively doing swaling for the last couple of years to try to deal with, um, getting the water off the roads. But I sent both of you those photos of that intersection, um, uh, in the four hundred Black of Linwood, that is just, it was terrible this year, I mean, the water was about this deep in the middle of it, and it was, uh, and we actually had to ditch lighting out there to barricade it off a little bit.
And, and you'll see that, I mean, you see at Stevens Point all the time, they're trying to retrofit some of these swales just to store the water. And obviously, that's a situation where you have more water coming in than just the front yard and the roadway, it's probably coming down the other side streets, and, and so we just gotta increase the storage availability there, so. And by the nature of, let's say if we pulverize this roadway, and then we put a little more base and we just repave, that road's gonna raise up, you know, six to eight inches. And all of a sudden, your outer edge, you're gonna have a little more storage just with that alone. So we're gonna have to do substantial swaling, you know, but you do need to do something to keep the road dry, because obviously, that's the most important part to a good road is, is proper drainage.
This is the type of pavement that we ultimately put in, have any kind of bearing in terms of the drainage, you know, the surface material? I mean, the ultimate finished coat, I mean.
Not really, I'm assuming it's gonna be asphalt, uh, so.
Are there differing types of asphalt, I mean, some that are more porous than others that allow?
Yeah, nothing that we would utilize in Wisconsin traditionally.
Do you want to go through?
Yeah, I'll, I'll finish going through here quickly.
Yeah, I was gonna say too, our goal is to probably keep the basis, they do have porous pavements, but we're not gonna want to try to promote water making into our subgrade, so we're gonna go with a pretty standard cross section for asphalt.
I agree with that. Okay, for, back on Dave's here, uh, page two of survey, um, again, they, uh, we would need driveway profiles to make sure that we have a decent match and don't have excessive driveway removal to make them fit. Uh, bidding phase is in here, which is good. Uh, level of inspection on page four, they've got construction phase, that's spelled out, and I agree with those as far as the level, uh, of coverage for construction inspection. On page five, number seven, uh, just talks about funding, and there's an eleven thousand dollar L.RIP grant that's not mentioned, that's probably because we didn't tell Dave. We talked about the permit. As far as materials, uh, um, owner's responsibility, that would be, you know, things that the village would provide on page six. I'm willing to help with that if, uh, you'd like me to. And as far as, uh, compensation, one thing to note is, uh, I believe Dan's, uh, or POBs, uh, bottom line, uh, as far as their cost includes inspection, is that correct?
Correct.
So that's an estimated level of inspection, and you've got those hours in there?
Yeah, for our construction services, if you go to the actual, the lump sum breakup, it says how many visits we're planning on, including.
Okay, maybe it, maybe it is in there then, I just missed it.
Page name.
Okay, so, yeah, so then, then I would note that, um, with Dave's, with, with grammars, uh, he's got the hourly rate listed here, but it's not, I believe, caught, figured into the cost.
Correct.
Correct? So that's, uh.
Can, seems like an appropriate time, can, can you give us an idea based on your experience, what, on, on page, at the bottom of page six, you've got civil engineering seventy-eight dollars an hour, um, engineering special sixty-five, can you give us an idea on a project like this, what sorts of expenses, what that might amount to?
Sure, and that's why, I mean, again, trying to be fair with each other, do, are we talking full-time inspection, are we talking part-time inspection, are we talking, you know, I know what, we've done numerous times, but do I know what my competitor is going to put into a proposal? So, that's why I can certainly give you an estimate, and I could, I have it with me, but I don't know if, you know, if we're comparing apples to apples. Because, because maybe somebody thinks that this is a two-month-long construction period, and maybe it's only a month long. So, I mean, there's a lot of variables that go into it, uh, so, you know, we're gonna give you what you guys ask for and what's required of by the contractor. And I can guess what that is, but, you know, is the contractor gonna do a great job and, and move along quickly? Or is he gonna take forever and, and all of a sudden, it's twice as long, so? And, and what's, what is POB covering and what, you know, so that's why it's, it's a little tricky.
Yeah, I would agree with that, it's, it's a little bit of a, of a guess, I mean, we want.
That's why when you go by rate, when you go by rates, you know, assuming that you have to deliver a certain amount of time, you know, the rate becomes, you know, the deciding factor, kinda.
Sure, okay, so, but, but I, probably fair to say, your total price here is going to be higher, we just don't know how much it's.
You could compare, yeah, I would say that, but, uh, you could compare.
Yeah, definitely, the construction phase, assuming you guys want us on board, keeping track of the contractor, make sure he's doing it for plan, using the right materials, yes, definitely, so.
So something like this, you wouldn't know.
And as far as POB rates, if you want to compare to grammar rates, they're on, Dan's included them here as an exhibit, so you can compare that way.
You talk about full-time versus part-time, I wouldn't think something like this, you'd want someone standing out there the entire time.
No, typically, when it's, like, the removals, you know, you want to be out there helping them for the sockets up, the grading is definitely part-time, especially if there's a lot of grading. Uh, paving, you definitely want full-time, you want, you know, want them to make sure, because it's only gonna be two days' worth or a day's worth of paving, so. So, yeah, I mean, definitely use common sense on, you're not standing around, you know, it would just be, we have an office, you know, two blocks from here, so we just buzz out here in the morning, check at lunchtime, you know, just to make sure things are proceeding as needed.
Yeah, page, page four, as, as I mentioned, is construction administration, you've got removals part-time, grading part-time, stormwater work full-time, which I agree with, because we need the swales rate. Road base work part-time and paving full-time, I, so these are, you know, it makes sense, and you don't, and Dave's right, you don't really know what hours are gonna be required.
On a project like this, what happens at the end of driveways, which are technically on our right-of-way, I believe?
I would, we haven't really talked about that specifically, but I guess my thought is, we would hold the road profile, the middle of the road profile as close to where it is now as we could, which would mean the, the outer edge would raise some, but not, you know, not six inches. So you would have, so that would minimize how far you would need to cut back driveways, but basically, driveways would need to be saw cut back and then patched back in with asphalt at, at a distance that makes a good blend.
So basically, we would be doing that, and if someone already has cement there or something else, then they would have to do it themselves, or, I don't know.
Well, typically on state projects, we replace in kind, uh, if we take out concrete, we put back concrete. This is a little different in that we don't have, well, you don't have curb and gutter, you don't have sidewalk, you don't really have a defined line. So, what I would recommend is that we tie them all back in with asphalt, and, and they're not gonna be back terribly far, but like ours, for example, is sidewalk right out to the edge of the road pavement than it really should be. It should be to a point, concrete, and then with a, with a, a blend of apron that's, that's asphalt, because there's no curb there. That's just my opinion.
Who, and we pay for that? The village pays for that?
The village pays for replacing that, yes.
Okay, all right.
Well, if we're gonna cut it out in the right-of-way, we gotta at least put it back to where it was.
Right, yes.
We're not gonna stake homeowners with a bill for.
Right, right, they're not gonna be billed, I guess, the, the only question is, do, and, and it's up to the village, it's not up to me, I mean, do we put back?
And it's gone both ways, we've done projects where they do replace concrete with concrete, or they replace it all with asphalt, it's purely a decision you guys have to make prior to construction.
Yeah, if you're okay with having concrete right out to the edge of your road, then replace them all in kind the way they are now, and it
Oh, wow.
Probably function fine, but, you know, it's, it's going to cost the village less probably if they don't pour concrete.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I would think so.
And, but it is typically a big deal, because, and there's a lot of concrete driveways out there, but, you know, the homeowner's gonna say, I put concrete there, you didn't give me concrete back, but you're all within the right-of-way, so you guys may, as a village, want to come up with an ordinance or a policy, you know, that says, this is what we're doing on this project and all projects moving forward. And I do agree with not sticking the village with concrete, just because the property owners put concrete out to the road, and we do it with a lot of municipalities, and at the end of the day, if we can just put back the road surface, so if it's asphalt, it's asphalt. And yes, if you're going deep into the lots, you're going, you know, twenty, thirty feet, it's a big deal, if you're only going five feet, you know, and you have just a little flare of asphalt, you know, matching your nice concrete driveway, that's, that's usually acceptable. But you're still gonna have some people that don't like it.
Oh, we have a question.
We have a question.
Yeah.
Are, you're talking about maybe raising the road six to eight inches by the time this is all done, or the?
Well, that's what, that's what Dave suggested, but I'm suggesting not.
Well, as a person with a husband who is in a wheelchair, I'm very concerned about the angle in which this is going to go up to the road. You know, if you are going to add, replace, we have blacktop, so this is going to be a smooth angle that's going up to the road?
Definitely.
Level?
Whatever, uh, the, the road grade at the edge of the road in most areas will come up some, just because there's, the road is, is, has too much crown right now.
Right.
So it will come up some, I would suggest that we minimize that, and, and then the driveways will be cut back as needed to make sure it's a, a flatter slope back into the driveway and not deep.
And what is this going to do with the water coming down off the road then, if we don't have a swale in our yard? Are we going?
Well, there will, there will be a swale in your yard.
I think everybody, there'll be a consistent swale from, from Main Street all the way down to.
You're kidding.
Ridge. It's very expensive, roads are very expensive, gotta do things to take care of them, and getting water off of them is the first and, I mean, Dave even mentioned it a couple minutes ago.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I guess at this point, how, you, do you want to talk about the, um, your contact with?
Well, I think, you know, after a bit, I don't think it's appropriate, okay, to discuss this now, I think this is a little unorthodox, okay, as to how we proceeded. Normally, when you have a request for proposal, you have each of the entities come in and present, and then after you have that discussion, okay, then you sit down and try to find individuals such as Dan, who's got the common denominator. If this, I find, probably if I was sitting in either one of these two chairs, I'd be a little uneasy, okay, you know, about this. And, you know, the thing is, is that I understand, you know, we don't necessarily have anybody for a request for proposal, and of course, in my preliminary discussion, okay, that came up. And so I came to find, okay, what had been presented to both of these individuals, and there was none, okay? So what can I say, you know, to, uh, you know, Rickard and Milky, okay, when I don't have, you know, a document that's going to have information that's equitable to both or all three parties, okay, overall? And, uh, you know, so I have some problems with this.
I would tend to agree, I mean, we can't, it's kinda hard to compare apples and oranges at this point. I just, I don't think this village has ever done this before, no.
No, that is the problem, and that's, that's why it's come together this way.
And I, I, to be fair to everyone involved, um, we would want to compare apples to apples to apples, or apples to apples. And I, I just haven't had enough time to look at both of these and see what part of it's not so much apple and more orange. Um, I think Dan kind of, Dan Holloway kind of explained what, how the differences are, but, um, yeah, so.
Well, shall we table it till next month and discuss it again next month, I, how do you want to proceed?
I mean, in fairness to the two gentlemen that came today, is there more information we could give you, any more that we could glean from you guys, that, that this has differed so greatly from maybe other projects you've done, that you feel that, you know, we need, we needed, you needed more information to make a, a good bid for us, or?
To make it easier on you guys, normally what we would get is an RFP that lays out the number of hours you're anticipating, what you want to see is final documentation. Do you want a topo, what does that topo include, and that way, when either of us provide you guys a number, it's very comparable, it is, you know exactly what you're getting, what you asked for is what you're getting. And then normally, you guys would meet on your own, make a decision of which person you'd like to go with, or you would have people come in and interview, if you have a top two or top three. And then at these meetings, you can only make a resolution of, you know, we're looking to go with POB or with grammar at this meeting. There's not really, it's, it's not normal for me and Dave to be sitting here.
Right, sounds like that, right.
Yeah. I guess my, my, you've explained, you got Linwood Avenue from here to here, and you want it reconduct, resurfaced, reconditioned, reconstructed, something, there's some drainage problems. It's pretty simple, I, I do projects like this all the time, and sometimes I'm just hired based on my quality, sometimes I have to compete by numbers, uh, but I'm fine with it. I mean, it's pretty simple projects, and, and we do them all the time. Uh, you've requested a proposal from three, I think that's state statute, you've hit that, and, uh, you know,
And, and I.
I don't need any more information, because this is what we do, and, and I can do it, so.
Okay.
In, in talking it over, you know, we, we, we said we wanted to move forward with something, so Dan and I talked about it, I said, so what do I do? He said, well, pick up the phone and call them. And, and so that's what I did, is I picked up the phone, I had essentially.
Partly my fault, because I didn't really give a lot of guidance, I just.
But, you know, I had essentially the same conversation with both of you, I said, come take a look at Linwood, here's some pictures, here's the problem.
The only problem, the only problem is, is that, you know, you didn't involve the other trustees, okay, to sit down and say, well, what are we gonna come up with, okay, what do we want to present, okay?
We talked about that.
Oh, no, we didn't, okay, we came up with a tentative plan, okay, and the comprehensive planning thing, okay, that we went forward, but we sure didn't come up with, okay, an RFP.
No, we did not come up with an RFP, that's correct.
That's right. That's right.
That's correct. We did not. And, I, if we did not. Um, I guess, how would you like to proceed at this time? Do we wanna table this, have a, a special meeting to talk about this more?
Well, I think we need a special meeting, okay, particularly to talk about the third option.
Have we received a proposal from them, or did we just call...
Well, there was no proposal, because we have an RFP. Now, what I didn't know is what was said, okay, to either of these gentlemen?
Yes.
You know, because I want it to be equitable.
How would you all like to proceed? Let these guys go and, um...
Yeah, I would definitely thank them, okay?
Yes. Thank you very much, both of you, for putting something together.
I certainly apologize for somewhat of the awkward position that we've placed you in, but I think, you know, we need to, you know, do our homework here, just a little bit, okay? Come together as to what was truly put out, so that if we have another discussion, we've got something, you know, in writing to present.
Do we wanna do a special meeting on it? I think...
Well, I think you need this as a singular topic, okay? I don't think you ever accomplish anything, okay? You know?
In ten minutes or something.
Right.
Do you have any feelings on Jim?
No, we need a special meeting, we should have a special meeting.
It's fine with me, I'm gonna be done after today, so...
Yeah, well, well, then, thank you both for what you've put together for us, and I, it, it, it seemed to me to be kind of the, kind of what you described, repaving of a road, what we had talked about at the comprehensive, um, planning committee, that repaving a road, doing the lights and sway lights. Um, but, uh, thank you very much, appreciate it, and we'll be back in touch with you as to how we're gonna proceed.
I guess I would ask that, if it is a numbers game, then obviously the numbers need to be kept quiet.
Absolutely.
So, if there's another party involved, or not, I mean...
Yeah, no, absolutely. It has to be totally...
All right.
And then, again, I mean, checking preferences and qual, you know, qualification and stuff might be important too, if you're getting to that point, so...
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, both of you.
Can I ask, does anybody know how to do RFPs? I mean, if I attempt this, does anybody even know how to put one together?
Maybe that could be a discussion at our special meeting here.
Okay, sorry.
Absolutely. I do. I can write a perfect one.
Thank you, Mike.
Do we wanna schedule that now, or should we wait on it?
Let's wait, let's wait. All right.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. POB item.
Oh, um, yes. So the update on the row development, and thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Next item, is that what you're waiting for?
Yeah.
Um, so I have had, uh, several telephone calls with the city, and, um, waiting to hear back from one piece, and then there's a document that says, oh, shoot, I didn't, I didn't get it done yet today. Um, there's a, a, a document that says that we agree with the city sewer, and that, uh, that's about it. And I, I got an email from Joel Lemke saying that everything looks good, everything looks fine, he's got the plans, everything looks like it's up to the city specs, he's perfectly fine, but he said, I need to get a phone call from the DNR. And he said, once he gets that phone call from the DNR, then he will get back to me, and then that document will get signed. Is that, does that work?
Yep.
And, uh, we have been working on...
Is that the document that happened with the...
No, um, yeah, well, yeah, it's a letter that goes with this. This is, this is the document that they have presented, that PO, uh, sorry, um, that Row has presented, and we just have to sign off on it, and they want us to put it on letterhead saying that we agree. Um, I don't know, do you wanna speak to this at all? What this is, do you, are you familiar, it's not your, I know it's not your project.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty standard, it's just the town has the right to review projects, um, even though they've been reviewed at higher levels. Um, they have been approved by the DNR, the project is approved by state DSPS, and the DNR already at this point. It depends, some towns are comfortable signing off on it, some prefer to have an engineer just check over it. It's purely up to you guys to decide one way or the other.
Yeah, I, and, and when I talked to Joel, Joel said, this is so basic and so standard. He said, I would, he said, you can feel comfortable, but he said, I just need to hear back from the DNR before, so that's kinda where, where it's at.
So do we need a motion to put the agreement on letterhead and send it in, or...
Um, do you have that? Is that, that's not, no, that's not the letter, that's the other thing.
Um, let me see what I might have.
Do you have that?
Yeah, bring me this, it's what you might be talking about.
Yeah, this is it. Okay, so it's a letter that's to James Lundberg out point of beginning. It says, Dear Mr. Lundberg, your construction plans designed for the proposed sanitary sewer and main extension, which is all city stuff, to service the Francisco Estates Development dated 2/26/18, prepared for Row builders, are hereby approved by the Village of Park Ridge for submittals to the Wisconsin DNR. The Village of Park Ridge will accept ownership of the sanitary sewer and water main extensions upon completion and approval of construction. And, um, they had asked Kathy to sign this, and I said, I don't think that's a Kathy thing, I think that's like...
Who signed it last time?
I don't think we, we don't have a copy of this in the file from last time. We, we also, we also have a builder's agreement that never got signed in the file last time, and we were actually, we've been working on doing a new builder's agreement and actually getting signatures this time.
Okay.
But this is not in, there's nothing like this in the file.
Sure.
So...
So you sent all the approvals from the state and from the DNR in?
Uh, this is the one that's waiting on, so one of the requirements to submit to the DNR for a sanitary extension or a water main extension is that the city, or the town approves of what we're going to be installing. They're still gonna review it for thoroughness, to make sure it meets all the requirements. You're more or less saying, we agree with what is being submitted.
And then ultimately, we accept ownership of that once it's done by Row builders. So if you would like to make a motion to accept that and sign this, that would be great.
Who wrote that letter? That's what I'm, I thought you were reading the copy.
They wrote the letter.
Okay.
Yeah, they actually wrote the letter.
I thought you were reading the copy of it, and so that's why I asked why, who signed it last time, but that's, that's what they wrote for us to sign.
Yeah, that's just our generic template that we handle for the...
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so I make a motion to, we move forward with that letter.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right, there we go. Um, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by a same eye.
Aye.
And that was, I think, Randy and Steve?
It was kinda like a unison thing.
Okay, all right. All right, let's get on to something more interesting.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you, Dan. Dog licenses. Is there a motion to accept the 2018 dog license report?
So...
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by a same eye.
Aye.
Um, Stephen Gordon. Stephen Gordon. All right, building inspectors report, um, motion to accept the building inspectors report. Randy, and, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Steve, are there, uh, discussion?
Um, is it next home priority or new home priority? I, I, I saw that this was written out to new NH priority, and, um, then on the report, it's new home priority. I'm assuming it's next home priority, because that's who moved into 20th priority.
Yes, that was my mistake.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we don't have another sign that we're...
No, no, this is the sign right over there.
Putting a building permit in for it.
Okay, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by a same eye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. All right, acceptance of the first quarter fire chief's report. Do you get a motion?
One more.
Jim, second?
Second.
Gordon, uh, discussion, questions? Take our fire chief sitting right here.
Elaborate on it all, Brian?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Happy to talk about any particular section.
Um, I, the last page on equipment, the, I'm gonna mispronounce it, the SBCA?
SCBA compressor?
Yeah, you have SBCA, instead of, is it supposed to be SC, like super?
SC, self-contained breathing apparatus.
Got it.
My air.
Have you, no biggie. Um, do you have a, a cost? Have you figured that out?
Yeah, I know it's got a burn, the fourth, it's got four cylinders, and the fourth is burned, but I do not have a cost.
What?
To be determined.
Do you have a, to replace it altogether? I know you said Dewey doesn't even have one.
We repaired this before. It's gonna be a recurring problem, because the compressor's not designed to do what we're making it do.
Yeah.
Um, see how I can make this a short story? It's a very unique compressor. The only, the closest repair service prior to chance we found is out of Minnesota. It's, uh, this, for instance, the nucks and bolts on it, they're not metric, they're not standard, they're their own German type tool. Chief Slicer picked it up, dirt cheap, like fifteen hundred dollars, and it's normally a twenty thousand dollar unit. Um, as I wrote, I think I wrote in here that it was, you know, retrofitted before we got it, so it runs really hot. We have to have the air tested quarterly, I mean, it always performs and passes the air tests and all that, but it's just one of those things that, um, it's doing more than it's designed to do, but when it works, it works.
Exceeding respects.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, some departments, yeah, they don't, so then, like, we've had to fill up a couple times, we drive the squad over to haul and fill up with air. You know, I don't know all what departments have a compressor and which departments don't, because they are not cheap. So a lot of your smaller departments just borrow air from your neighbor departments.
Okay. All right, any further questions, discussion, or...
Yeah, I'm, um...
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry to congratulate Colin for his promotion, so does that mean you have two officers now besides yourself?
Yep, we used to have two captains, with Captain Slicer and Captain Kraft, and now we have Captain Kraft and Lieutenant Motion.
Okay.
We're back fully staffed with our supervisory rings.
Okay. I'm still a little confused about this number on the roster. Um, you said there are eighteen at the end of quarter four.
Yep.
I think in the last few meetings, you've been using the figure nineteen, and since the end of quarter four, if my recollections are correct, you've had one retirement and one resignation. So does that mean we now have sixteen?
No, we should be at eighteen, 'cause I double-checked it, but we had two start in November, so, I mean, two of them started in the fourth quarter, if that makes your numbers drive.
So I finished fourth quarter with eighteen, but, I don't know. And does that mean, I guess what's important with the fire department is how many of you are certified to be able to enter a burning building? Um, so if you haven't completed the first entry level class, then you're not allowed to, is that correct?
You have to have at least the entry level class to enter a burning building.
So, does that mean there are four here that haven't?
Right now, we all can go, except for one, one of our senior persons is an MPO, he's a motor pump operator only, and a fire inspector. But right now, every single person has the bare minimum training they need to do their jobs in our department.
That's good.
What's the name of that basic course?
Entry. So it says on here, we have two that recently completed entry level, that's the basic course. And then what we aspire to train everybody to is the state certified firefighter one, which just carries a bit more credentials, I guess, and gives you the actual state certification rather than a mid-state course completion certificate.
So six, sixteen are at the state level firefighter one or above? Is that right?
Should be. Yeah, I'd have to go through and crunch those numbers, but, um, so we have a handful that have completed the firefighter one, but have not tested out, so I don't think we're at sixteen.
Oh, okay.
We're probably, I don't know, twelve or fourteen that are at the firefighter one. It's not an easy class to pass and get certified, which is why I try to set the bar that that's the minimum, because it gives me a level of comfort that they actually know their stuff a lot more than the entry level mid-state certificate does.
Is that, answer your questions? You, Gordon?
I think so.
Okay, any, anything else? Any other discussion? All right, here you go, all those in favor of accepting the fourth quarter fire chief's report, signify by a same eye.
Aye.
Always, they're signed. Um, so the last meeting, we didn't accomplish much, and I was frustrated by that, and I, I put together the email that I sent out to all of you about, I don't know, a week ago, and I had sent it to Brian, I don't know, two weeks ago. Kathy Bootleer and I had talked. Kathy was chaired up the, um, committee that oversaw the fire department, monitoring planning committee, I think it was called, a couple of years ago. And so I, I just said to her, you know, help me put together kind of just a framework to start a discussion, just, just to start the discussion. And so we put together these questions. Brian very thoughtfully answered with very, um, complete answers. I then, just this afternoon, actually in the last couple hours, I tried to, and Brian, did you, I emailed this to you, did you get it?
I saw it at 5:25 and printed it off.
That's about when I, I finished, it was in about ten minutes past five.
Yeah, the Kathy thing, Kathy.
Um, so this is really important, it's a draft, because what I did, Brian hasn't reviewed this and made changes. I just took, I had all these words that were in his big email, and his responses, which I was very, very, this was great, very helpful, and, um, I took the numbers, and I just put the numbers in a grid, um, which now Kathy gave you a copy of. And do you, do you have a copy of this too?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, and it is for no other reason other than just to start a conversation. My question for everybody here is, how do you wish to proceed tonight? As board members, I think it's important that we understand what we're talking about financially as we spend taxpayer dollars, and that we have a, a firm understanding of what we're committing ourselves to, which is, uh, you know, that's our role. And so I, I plugged out these numbers, and I don't know if Brian wants to comment, but I guess my question for you all is, how would you like to proceed this evening?
There really isn't anything in our agenda that allows us to proceed with any decision making tonight, like, you know...
Discussion of possible action.
I guess it would depend what that would be. Discussion of possible, possible action on the fire department future planning questionnaire, so that's, is that what we're restricted to?
It does say questionnaire on there, I guess I...
So that kind of restricts us to that, that, that decision right there.
Yeah, we probably should have just ended with the word future.
Yeah.
That's, that's my fault in this, um, yeah, I really didn't mean for it to be just restricted onto this, that was not my intention. I thought we might move things forward tonight, that was really my intention. I don't know, how would you all like to proceed?
Well, we approve the agenda as written, so...
So we can't change it, so, um, which, which is...
Yeah, I didn't really intend for that, I meant to, I don't want the agency agenda.
So why don't we make a note? Let's put this, um, I mean, we can have discussion on this, this questionnaire right here, according to that, um, and then, I'm assuming this is part of the questionnaire, the scrap, or this, uh...
Well, like I said, all I... Well, like I said, all I did was-
So we can discuss this also.
I took his answers and I tried to plug them in, and he has not had a chance to look at this-
I wrote some notes.
And respond as to whether I'm on the mark or off the mark, or, um-
So, so let's make sure we get it on at least next month's agenda, or if, if we think this is something that we need, just like the roads, and I think the roads are more money, but this is still a very big thing, if we need another special meeting, I mean, show up at home anyway, so.
We could put two things on the special meeting agenda.
We could, but that could end up being a pretty long special.
Yeah.
You've gotta take these one at a time here, you know, so that's, that would be my suggestion.
I, I have to say, I really did not intend for us, this to limit us tonight. That was, uh, planning questionnaire, I just, yeah. Anyway. Well, Brian, would you like to speak to this?
Sure.
Why not to, why don't you-
Mind you, this is like a-
Elaborate.
Review, alright?
I get-
And I know this is a draft, but we're not replacing engine one and two. Actually, engine two is the one that we want to replace, so they're kind of, depends how you skin the cat, they're kind of reverted, but-
Sure.
You know, the current engine one is gonna become the engine two, but it's, you know, it's, we're not replacing two vehicles.
Sure.
Um, the other thing, briefly, so this column here with Ron saying he saved three hundred thousand dollars, that was not just limited to vehicle maintenance, that was with grants and everything. So for instance, um, down below talks about SCBA gear. Um, in Ron's tenure, they got FEMA grants that replaced all of our SCBA, they got FEMA grants that replaced all of department's gear. So those, the three hundred thousand, it says, he said three hundred thousand over thirty years, is that ten dollars a year. That was his career total, not just vehicle maintenance, and that's over there. I don't have the fire department budget in front of me, so I don't know exactly, um, off the top of my head what we have. But one would hope, and I don't have a crystal ball, but it should make sense, as we start upgrading our equipment, our maintenance shouldn't go down. That seems to me to make, make sense. A new truck should take less maintenance than an old truck. The row that says pay point system for firefighters, I'm not sure where the thirty-five hundred is. It was at six thousand nine hundred ninety-seven in twenty seventeen, and I think we added like seven hundred dollars to that. So that's, that's over seven thousand dollars, um, currently for the point cost.
Okay, it originally had been suggested at ten thousand dollars, but then it was, uh-
Yeah, and I, I wrote that in my-
Yeah, I saw that.
Kind of dissertation, I guess if you wanna follow that, trying to answer the question, but the thirty-five hundred is not even close. Um, it was designed for a six thousand five hundred payout when we started, but the sixty-nine ninety-seven makes up for taxes or whatever.
To get it to ten thousand now, and, and I don't know what that number is either. Is it, to get it to ten thousand, is it like twenty-five hundred bucks?
It'd be about that, because we were at sixty-nine ninety-seven, and I think we added seven hundred for twenty-eighteen.
Yeah.
Which twenty-eighteen was the first time that that increased in three years since we had a point system.
Yeah.
Um, the SCBA compressor, um, confident we can repair it. We'll probably have to keep repairing it every three years, it's just what it's designed to do, but it's still a lot cheaper than spending twenty thousand for a new one.
Is that ever on the used, or don't you ever buy something like that in the used?
No, we could buy something like that used, especially, you know, I'd wanna know why the department, so if, so if they got a new one on a grant, then I wouldn't be so afraid to buy their old one, but if they're getting rid of their old one because it's maintenance, then I don't need one. And that's something too, once we, how do I say this nicely? Once we settle down with the fire department to start going after some of those grants, that's something that's a safety thing, because it's the air that we breathe, so it ups the odds to, you know, be successful.
Right.
Especially on the bigger grants. So that's something, again, once, you know, we settle some of the fire stuff down, and we can give some resources to that, we should get back on the, I wanna get back on at least trying to get some grants. Um, their turnout gear, ten-year life, um, by standard, we're supposed to replace it in ten years. And I think the fifty thousand, because it's about twenty-five hundred bucks a set. So if we had a brand-new set today, it should be replaced in ten years. And obviously, we just spent eight thousand dollars on gear, so in ten years, if that gear lasts, because we do have gear that doesn't last ten years, six years old, and we tear out any or something like that, and it just doesn't, it's really hard to fix that gear. Uh, breathing bottles, we just bought a bunch of those, so we should be good. I didn't get a whole lot farther with my review, radios, ladders. Um, the generator, I know this is something Trish asked in email, the fire department wanted to take it over. I just wanna be crystal clear, currently, the generator is not a fire department budgeted item, that's a village budgeted item. Um, I'm not entirely a favor taking it over, because I think that generators are a pain in the butt to be blunt, but, um-
Well, that's how I feel about it, Brian.
We've always helped out. I mean, Slicer was the one that put the block heater on, the battery maintainer. Um, I was the one that came a couple of weeks ago when the repair service guy was here for it. I did some troubleshooting, so right now, and I think I put this in an email to Trish, but not the whole board. The generator repair guy was here, um, there's a hundred and twenty volt, that's your standard volt receptacle that's in there, and that powers the battery maintainer, the battery heater, and the engine block heater. That box does not have power. So when it's really cold, and he even said, you know, in the warmer weather, we could probably get by all summer without it, but guess what? It was cold. The generator was in air mode last week or the week before. I came and reset it, um, killed the power of the building, it started up, it ran just fine. It's an overcrank, so if it turns too long, like if the block heater's not working and the engine's cold. But I, uh, before I, you know, put the board on notice or the village on notice, I wanted to see if we just had a trip breaker or something. We got three different circuit breaker boxes in this building. But I can't find a trip breaker, so I think we're gonna have to call electrician to get power to that box, and then that should help it start up, so it doesn't go into the overcrank mode. The last time, you know, maybe a month ago, we had a service guy here, what was wrong with it? There's a speed sensor, it's basically like a magnet thing on a flywheel that measures RPMs. And because it's magnetic, it collects dust and shavings like from the flywheel and stuff. Kathy was here, so I asked the guy if that's not something they would normally do, because they come annually and service it, because it just seemed like it shouldn't fail. And he says they only clean that every couple of years, and it may not have gotten cleaned last time, so. I didn't really feel the best about that, if I could trip it out. Maybe when we look at our contract or our service agreement, that's something we wanna make sure that they're catching, since they're here anyway doing preventive maintenance on it. Uh, breathing apparatus, yeah, the rest of this-
Question I have on that, is that the only outfit that's able to do maintenance on, something like this?
It's the best outfit for the value that Slicer could find. Kathy Boudelier, when she was village president, tried to get a local electrical contractor, I think she had Bushman, because usually we have Bushman do everything, I don't blame me on that. And Kathy Boudelier could talk to you more about that, but she tried, because Ron was always doing it, takes some of the burden off Ron, off the fire department. And I, without speaking for Kathy, she just wasn't able to find, we got some estimates that were way out of ballpark to repair that Ron said that. Ron, Ron found this person to do it for like a quarter of what, this is speaking three years ago, it was broke. But Kathy tried, and this Walther place is the best value that Slicer could find. If Slicer says it's good, usually it's, you know, good enough for me type of thing, but, um, I mean, you're talking Kathy Boudelier and other things too. She could speak to her experience and try and find somebody else.
How long is the warranty on the work when they come to do something significant?
I have no idea, Doc. We have a service agreement that's like a one-page thing and not very detailed. That's why I was asking this guy if that speed sensor isn't something they do as part of PM, and he said, no, they only clean it every few years. Well, I'm thinking, if it's a ten-minute job, because that's literally what it was, and you hear it once a year, and we're paying for it, we probably should get that little thing cleaned once a year.
Where did it come from?
What's that?
Where does this-
It's a company Walther, like W-A-L-T-H-E-R, they're not local.
I think they're from like Waukesha or something like that.
Yeah, but it happened to have a guy, we called him here the next day, and I asked the guy if he lived in town or something, and he said, no, they just happen to be here. But I thought it was pretty good, thought one day he was here eight-thirty the next morning, but that's just happenstance to me.
My understanding is the reason we have this huge generator is because we need a lot to crank up the siren we have.
Yeah, it's a three-phase generator, because it's a three-phase siren. And I'd be the first to tell you, it would be a board decision, but if the siren fails tomorrow, I'm not sure I would lobby to replace that.
Could we get one that doesn't take as much to crank it up?
You could, but probably at a much higher cost. I think we paid less for the siren, because it was three-phase, and then, I mean, most people have other means than sirens today, but communities still have, and the city still supports some. They commonly just add them in parks, so it's, you know, something that's a safety net, I guess. But that's my quick review of this spreadsheet.
Now, if you're getting a new fire truck, does that come with some sort of warranty for different things, or is it not?
Different components, well, like the pump will probably have a different warranty than the chassis. Like if you buy a new car, your four Taurus come to find your bumper to bumper. The chassis should have the warranty, and then the components will. I don't know if the builder gives anything, that might vary by manufacturer, but not to put the, um, cart in front of the horse, but that's probably something that when we write an RFP for them, we gotta consider stuff like that. I mean, an international would have a different warranty than a freight company does.
Do you wanna speak to this process of, of, um, assuming that the board approves buying a truck, a custom-made truck, can you, can you talk about the process a little bit? Are you anticipating working with the village attorney to develop that RFP?
Well, I think, kinda like the earlier discussion, the RFP is, in, in my opinion, in a sense, it's a legal document. I mean, that, to Doctor's point, if you don't keep it confidential, if you don't have some legal language built into the RFP that, you know, it's not binding, you don't have to go a little bit, and all these other things that, uh, you know, a contract attorney could guide you on, that's why I think it's, it's important that the RFP has to stand up, so we don't get in a bind. I mean, I think there's a hundred and one things that could go wrong with the RFP process. But then, you know, I think just like the roads, we develop a list of specs, and I think the better we can be with the specs on the fire truck. You know, even, we have to go right down to the length, width, and finished height of the truck, and it's not capacity, it's the finished truck that has to fit in that building. You know, twelve fifty pump, thousand gallons of water, two-person cab. And then, you know, that's something that Chance can help us a lot with before, it would have been Slicer. But, you know, these guys know the different types of brakes, a twelve-inch disc versus a ten-inch disc, based on, you know, how much weight you're carrying down the road with a thousand gallons of water. But, you know, I don't think we're gonna have a one-page spec sheet for a fire truck. It's gonna be five to ten pages of spec. You know, it might be right down to type of brake lines or something. We had a rough draft of that when we got prices last time, so I think it's a matter of resurrecting what Slicer did. I would then have Chance take a look at it, um, Captain Kraft, maybe some senior leadership on the department, does this all make sense? And then we bake that spec sheet into the request for proposal process, send it out to at least a handful of fire truck builders, and go from there. You know, I think, you know, as the bits come in to the contractors earlier, they have to be confidential, and then, you know, I would assume it would be, you know, the full board decision, maybe the fire department would look at it and make the recommendation to the board that this is the builder and this is why, and then the board can challenge, well, you know, this one's ten thousand dollar cheaper, why are you going with the ten thousand dollar more expensive bid? And some of that, you know, that little bit of two-way, two-way street, I'll be bantering if you will. It's kinda the way I envision it. I think we have the specs already, it's just engine two. Because we had to, we didn't have to request for a proposal, but we got basically, you know, estimates to build, which they needed some level of specs just to give us an estimate.
Do you have the, um, specs, do you have the, the RFP from the truck from nineteen ninety-four? When engine one was purchased?
I could go through the files and whoop. I honestly have no idea.
But I would think that'd be really helpful as far as when it comes to size, and what, what was important when that-
On size, important now. I can look, I can tell you that a lot of the records, even employment records from twenty years ago, just are not what they should have been, but I can take a look.
I'm betting Elmer has that, I bet it's at your house somewhere.
Elmer had a file cabinet full of records, which I gave to Tom Glotman.
Oh.
So I have no idea what happened.
I'll take a look, I'm not gonna hold my breath, but there might be, there might be something.
Well, I would think that, that spec sheet that was developed, came here a few years back, okay, would be the starting point, and then to take a look at what, you know, are there any things that have changed, okay, in terms of standard firefighting, you know, procedures? Do you need this? Do you need that?
It'd give us a huge jumpstart, and I know Slicer's still willing to help us out too, so we have that, that expertise.
Ask a question?
Yeah, Brian, go ahead.
I know an RFP is required, but at what point was it determined that we need a new truck? Instead of the used truck that fits the bill?
Well, so I'll just say, that kind of discussion really isn't on the agenda, and we've already had some comment about what's on the agenda and what's not on the agenda. I'm, I'll take responsibility. I didn't word item number eleven very well. Um, I've had a really couple of super busy weeks at work, and, uh, we did not spend as much time going through the agenda. I wish that somebody had pointed this out. Kathy updated the agenda on, on Saturday, and I, I apologize for item eleven not being broad enough to allow us to do much more than talk about this, because I certainly, uh, had envisioned doing more. So anyway, I'm, I'm not gonna give you a very satisfactory answer, and I apologize. But, uh, maybe next month, we'll probably have a, a fuller discussion on that topic. Anyway, any more, any, any other items that, with regards to the fire department, um, information that one, anyone wants to bring up?
Did you say, as I look at here, do we have any AED, automatic?
We have one in our school, we bought with fundraising money.
Yeah, okay, what about the thermal imaging? We got that as well?
Same answer.
And a couple of things, uh, longevity on that type of equipment?
How long will they last? A long time.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you're talking at least, I would hope we get at least ten years out of both of those units.
And what's their age right now?
Two or three.
Two or three, okay.
You know, the AEDs, they reprogram them every so often, but usually that, they can, I, I'm still running AEDs since two thousand two with new EMS, so.
Alright. Um, any other discussions, questions, comments? Alright, then we'll move on to item number twelve. This is just information only, a couple of letters that came in that, um, just for your reading edification. Item number thirteen, discussion, did anybody have any questions on any of these letters? Discussion, possible action?
Just one, yeah, just one question.
Would that affect, okay, our bottom line in terms of tax levy if we're getting, you know, the black box there? You know, where, you know, in terms of, you know, assessed value and what we realize.
Are we speaking about Katrina's, Katrina's letter?
Yeah, right, right.
Um, I, I think we had a discussion about this a couple of years ago, and this Walgreens did not really pursue anything like that, because, because taxes are pretty low, I guess.
Our, our taxes are the lowest in-
Oh, okay, right.
Yeah, yeah, easily the lowest in the metro area.
Right.
I couldn't speak to the outlined rural areas. But our, uh, so just a moment of history, Walgreens actually filed a lawsuit against the city of Stevens Point, and ended up litigating it, uh, because their tax, their assessed value was significantly- ended up litigating it, uh, because their tax, their assessed value was significantly higher than ours here. And, uh, they challenged it. I don't know what happened. I don't recall the outcome of that legal case, but that's, that's what they do. If you assess too high, they will file a lawsuit against you, and that's what Katrina's writing about in there.
Do you know their address, uh, right there on the corner, for Walgreens?
No. No.
Because we could find out, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
All right, any, anything else on those two pieces of correspondence? All right, then item number 13, proposals for pruning trees around the streetlights. Everybody, um, there's three of them in here. And, uh, is there a motion for, to accept one of these? Anybody want to make a motion?
Well, I just, did you?
No, that's okay.
Right now, based on just cost, and we can discuss it, I'd make a motion to accept Eagle Tree Care's.
Randy?
Estimate.
Oh, second.
And Steve? All right, discussion?
I've had work done by John before, and I know he, he does, does a good job.
Who's John?
Uh, for Eagle Tree Care. But also, you know, Affordable has done work in the village before also.
Like, my review of the Affordable would be kind of mixed these days, because it seemed like it wasn't suitable the way they talked about. Building us one way and then build us a different way.
For which?
For the storm cleaning.
Oh, yes.
Plus, I, I have a neighbor who just had a tree leaning toward their house after that storm, and they kept promising to be there, and didn't show up, it didn't show up.
And, and that happens a lot with, uh, you know, arborist stuff, they get really incredibly busy. You know, John did put in here that he, he won't be able to cut the oaks until.
And that's correct.
I mean, you're looking November timeframe before those oaks are going to get cut at this time, at this point. Oak will.
Super nice to work with. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving Eagle Tree Care's proposal, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, item 14. So I have received, um, numerous comments and phone calls regarding the trucks going through the village. Uh, the, I don't know, like, we put up big orange flags, they didn't even slow village. You know, what we need are more streets out in the, uh, signs out in the city, but that would be one proposal. Anyone else have any other, anything they want to bring to the table with regards to semi-trucks?
Maybe we could use some larger signs before they make the turn, because once they have made that decision to make that turn, either down Greenbrier or Sunset, they're, they're going either way, you know? I don't know if a... When you're coming in west on this road is now 66, if, like, a sign right when you come into our village that says no trucks on, on village streets or something like that, would make them look for the route a little better. I don't, I think it's just a confusion on where the route is. Everybody's looking at their GPS, and I've seen them in the mornings, you know, I cross the street, I see them five o'clock in the morning. You know, they're tired, they're, it's dark, it's also dark in the morning.
I have chased some.
Yeah, and then what do you do with that? You know, that's the thing, I mean.
What do you do with that is exactly right.
You can get their, their light, I mean, Brian saw me one time run up and, you know.
It's never going to be the same truck driver usually.
Right, right. You know, so, I mean, we could either start, we could talk to the sheriff's department and, you know, start forwarding that information to them, and citations, you know, can be issued.
Yeah, if you, if you can get the license plate number, they can issue a citation if you call them.
But the person that sees it's going to need to be the witness for it.
Absolutely.
So that information is got there. Other than that, I mean, it's a signage issue, so. But you get bigger signs, big old signs, if you, I don't really like the sign pollution thing, but, um, the signs are kind of hard to see before you make the turn.
Anybody else see, anybody want to make a motion for, I don't know, to, I'm not even sure how much they cost?
We could go through BSI, Better State Industries.
Do you want to contact them?
I can, I've got a contact through.
How much they are.
What size sign are we looking at, though? I mean, it can vary, you know, if we get reflective, you know, things like that. You just want me to go with it?
I have no idea how big our signs are. I just know we've had the same signs for a long time. We've put the orange flags on them, we've replaced the orange flags about 20 times, and Jim Lamar did all of that.
No trucks, or just basically what they are, just bigger, or what are we thinking?
I don't have a plan.
Anybody?
Where are the signs?
So there's one on Greenbrier as you come in, there's one on Sunset here, as you make the turn.
So you'd have to make the turn.
That's the problem, you have to make the turn to see the sign.
Bigger ones there.
And they, well, they're, they're regular street-size sign, they got some old flags on them right now that are pretty much white. Usually truckers looking for that orange, you know.
I think you had them by original in Hillcrest coming.
Coming back in too, also. And usually that's not the issue, it's usually when they're going out, so. Well, how about I just, I don't know, what do you, highway signs, are, is there a certain size for highway signs for trucks to see?
You're, I mean, they come in different sizes, I guess I would upsize them, and where are they placed? Relative to 66, I mean.
Within 20 feet of the corners.
So they're fairly close. I mean, if you were turning, if you were stopping to turn, you could see them if you looked.
Right, but if you make that decision to turn before you look for a sign, you're, you're committed.
And the only other thing is, are, is there anywhere on 66 where you can put a, no left turn for trucks?
And that's what my thought was, for right on our village sign.
Can we put?
Yeah, I don't know where to put signs.
That's a state.
Not without asking.
I would ask.
Yeah, so who would we, can, ask?
The city gets the funding for it, don't they, to take care of it, because we, from what I've always been told, is we give our share, what we would get for taking care of that to the city, because they take care of the whole stretch.
Yeah, and it would probably be the city to deal with, because this is a connecting highway, so the city is responsible.
Conrad and Brian both want to.
It's a base point, Tony.
Oh, what is that?
Shorewood in Nazl, Wisconsin, has safety bump, a big one, that comes pavement that's nice gradual up. If you go too fast, you fly. Then they have a lit sign that has flashing lights that pops on and reads the vehicle that's coming, and tells them to slow down, or not to get here, so they may be different. And they are, the sun hits their transformer and lights them up, so they get their own energy from the sun. So Shorewood has a good system, Nakomis has another system with the big pump, but they are out there with signs that actually flash when they're needed. It senses the car or the truck.
I, I think there would be an issue trying to place something like that on 66, I don't know.
Definitely.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that would happen. Unfortunately, it's a state, state highway, so.
Most of the trucks are coming from Warzella or COPS GPS and saying them straight that way. They come out of Warzella's, if you watch their road books, they turn left, the GPS is saying that's the way to go. They'll lit sign that flashes.
Are they allowed up Pine Crest now?
Oh, that's, that's a truck route, yeah, yeah, that's, that is the truck route.
Maybe we just need some more truck route signs, and we can ask the city if we can put a couple down 66 that say follow truck routes? Just an arrow.
I, I, I actually think putting truck route signs in, but that requires them, that would be on city property. I've always thought that that's the best way to go, but that requires working with the city.
Sure.
You could justify a need.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Might just take a letter and, and, uh, hey, we'll do it and we'll maintain these signs, or we'll not do it if you don't want us to, but it's a problem for us, so.
Brian, you wanted to say something.
Oh, I was going to say, is it based on tonnage? If you put a sign up that says no trucks, what's it based on? If you have a furniture delivery or something like that?
And I don't know if our, our notices even say what it's based on. Just way too heavy for our roads, and, you know, the, the printing place and the, the um, dog grooming place here, both get truck deliveries at about five o'clock in the morning, um, or six. And, you know, they go right there, and this has never been a reinforced road right here that they're driving on, and that would restrict the business then, I mean, I don't know. I don't know, so. I can look for signs, um, I'll come up with some ideas for next meeting, let's make sure we put it on the agenda though, so we can discuss it. And, um.
Thank you. The other topic is April snow plowing, so, um, we just wanted to make the board aware that our contract with, uh, T and K, Ted, um, ended at the end of March. And he called me when we had our big storm, which was, I think, weeks ago, I think it was on, it was on the 1st, right? It was April, yeah. And we had, it was like about five inches of snow, if I remember right. It seems so paltry in comparison to this weekend. I talked to Ted, I said, uh, clearly we need to have plowing. I said, but you didn't do anything in November, how about you give us a free pass? And he said, well, I'll tell you what, I'll do it for you for gas. I said, that'd be great. Well, then Tuesday came. And, and, um, that, that doing it for gas argument didn't carry a whole lot of weight at that point. And then this weekend came, um, and this weekend I talked to Ted, I think, five times, and I talked to the Wapaka County Sheriff's Department three times or four times. Suffice it to say Ted and I are on a pretty close basis, um, at this point. Uh, Ted went in the ditch on the way back to Wapaka. And he, the Wapaka County Sheriff's Department would not allow him to be towed out until I called them, intervened, went up the chain as far as I could, and, um, got them to agree to allow a company to pull him out as long as they only had to close one lane to do so. But I, you know, used every card I could think of, so, anyway, um, Ted came back, and, uh, and now his question, I, I, and we're going to get a bill, I don't know what the bill is going to be, but we're going to get a bill. I don't think it's going to be like a whole month, I don't think it's going to be like an additional month. I think it'll be substantially less than that, but, um, I don't know if he's going to try to put that tow bill on it, I don't know, so. Anyway, uh, I just wanted to make that, make you guys aware of that. Uh, if it's, I, I'm looking outside past Charon's Head, and I'm seeing snow. If you guys have noticed, I'm, I'm looking out, I'm looking past you guys, I've been looking at that snow, and it's, it kind of.
Pretty, isn't it?
No, yeah. That's not the word I was going to use.
I guess on that, I'm sorry, you're done.
Yeah, and, well, I was just going to say it's supposed to, he and I have been talking about Wednesday, and, um, he wanted to know, and I said, well, I said, let's talk about it Tuesday night, so. It's been sort of a, um, I've been putting it off as long as possible to call him to try to save the cost, because my, my guess is we're going to get hit with a couple thousand dollar bill. Anyway, go ahead.
That's what I was going to say also, but, um, are we supposed to get more snow?
Wednesday, we're, yeah, I had heard, I'd originally heard three to five, then I heard six to eight, I don't know what it is now, so. Is it really?
Eight to fifteen, one to 10.
So if you guys are good with it, I will just continue talking to Ted and asking him to come when is necessary, so. Anyway.
He was stuck the other day, I don't know if you know that.
I did not know that, no.
He's plowing into my property, and I went out and said, please, you can do that. I have six feet of red granite, do it. So now he's really packed and heavy there. He went down the block and made a turn, he only has a small truck compared to what most people and what the Stevens Point people have. He made a short turn, got buried, his plow in the middle he had just put in, and he busted that, so that was holding him up.
Oh, that's where his wing got broken.
That's where his wing was busted.
Yeah.
So I saw him, because he was just spinning his wheels, he was sitting in the cab till the smoke was going, and I thought, he's got to get out there and shovel. So I took my shovel and went out there and said, I'd be glad to help you. And I said, you really have to clear these tires so it's down the pavement. And the front end, your wheels shouldn't be turned that way, because you're trying to drag them back, you've got to straighten out the wheels. So we did all of those, and it popped right out.
Oh, goodness, thank you.
He was probably very tired at that time. Guarantee that Ted was very, very tired.
I think Connie's going to send you a bill, too.
Yeah, you're not going to send us a bill, are you?
I know we have a two-year contract with him.
Yeah.
Could we have discussion of maybe pushing a, a two-week grace period into April next year?
Yeah, actually, he said that Tom Glodeman's, because I talked to him about that, and he said, Tom Glodeman's insisted that it start November 1st, and I said, well, sometimes it snows on November 1st. And he said, but, he said, maybe if you want to move it from November 15th to April 15th.
Right.
And I said, you know what, that makes a lot of sense, let's talk about it, you know, when we're talking about that stuff. To the fall, so, anyway, he wouldn't be opposed to that, he, he would be just fine with that. But then, if we get a snow in November, you know, we'll have it on the other end, so. Okay, anyway, I don't have anything else on that. On item 15, uh, the rummage sale date, you know, I'm wondering if that's going to actually happen. I, we might still have snowbanks on May 12th, but that is the date that we have always chosen for our rummage sale. It is the Saturday before Mother's Day, so all the kids can go buy their mother's presents, the chief. Anyway, so that's the rummage sale date. Form C got, is it said? Oh, good, thank you.
I need make copies.
No, I, unless everybody wants a copy, it's, uh, very, it's, it's, if you have insomnia, it is a terrific document to read for insomnia. Um, but if you would like to review a copy, Kathy's got it. I know I've taken a look at it. Um, do you want to speak to clerk training schedule for 2018?
Okay, I have scheduled myself for some training. Although in May I will have been here a year, but I think the training is very important for me to keep pursuing. So I'm going to be going to Menacqua on May 10th through the 11th for some super clerk training. So that's two days of training, plus I will get my board of review training there also. And then I'm going to Green Bay again this year, just like I did last year for a whole week, to get my clerk two certification. I'm trying to get four years in, and I will be certified as a clerk and a treasurer. So this is just going to be my second year. And then in September, there is a meeting at the Holiday Inn about local government. I signed up for it, but, um, as it gets closer, I'm going to provide information about this meeting, because it's a meeting that the trustees may want to attend. I think it will be very helpful. So I will pro- provide some information about that as it gets closer, but I am pursuing my training.
Good, thank you. Okay, thank you Card for the Affordable Tree Service, um, that is for picking, putting up and removing the Christmas decorations every year. The note that Kathy's going to write in, in Super Nice Timmanship, is right there, and we've all signed it, so, um, that goes to Affordable for helping us out with the Christmas decorations. That goes to Affordable for helping us out with the Christmas decorations. Approval of the March and April bills, do we have three signatures? Is there only two?
No, you signed it.
Okay, someone else want to take a look, please? Okay, we agree.
We do agree, yeah.
Would you mind? Thank you, okay. So, we'll come back to that in a second. Just a couple of comments about open book and Board of Review, we need somebody else to do Board of Review training. Jim has done it. This and Kathy is doing it, we need one more person to sign up for it. And then, while you're thinking about that, I just want to tell you what's.
We already talked about this, and I've done Board of Review, I just need the DVD to.
Okay, okay, perfect.
To re-go over.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you were gonna do it again this year.
I mean, if I wasn't elected, I wouldn't have, right?
You did the training last year, right?
I did the whole Board of Review last year.
Okay, okay, then, so, yours is actually good for two years, but you need to see that.
When you get that DVD.
And I have it, so I'll give it to you before you leave.
And I just have to say, so, with regards to open book and Board of Review, you might actually get a little action practice in it this year. We will do our open book and Board of Review next meeting, and we will start it and stop it very quickly, because there's no changes. However, BA Paul's, we've agreed that we're gonna have, the village is gonna be revalued. That will occur in probably August, they will come out in July or August, they'll send postcards out, they will notify everybody in the village, Kathy and I had a conversation with them earlier today. They will come out, and they will go, attempt to go through everybody's houses, and make a revaluation for the village. After that is done, then we will have the real, or, this, this one is real, but we will have the one where people may actually come to contest, and that is a possibility, so.
I'm sorry.
And that'll, that'll be in late August, early September.
Are we required to have a Board of Review after we do a full assessment, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, yes. And, and that's the one where there will probably be.
Sure, understandable.
Yeah, yeah, residents will come to that one, and, and air their, their concerns. So, at this point, I'm suggesting that we set this sort of statutory open book Board of Review next board meeting, is everybody good with that? We have to do it, we're required to do it, and then we will come back and revisit this in.
You still start at five thirty, huh?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we will, we just run it at the same time, nobody shows up for it, so. Traditionally, people haven't shown up for it. And I guess the last thing I want to say is, I want to just make a big thank you to Gordon. Gordon's been on the board for fourteen years?
Thirteen.
Thirteen years, long one time. Firefighter, and has been on numerous committees, I couldn't even say how many, has done just a tremendous amount of volunteer work for the village, and I just want to thank you. And I'm hopeful that everybody else in here will join me as well. This will be your last meeting, and it honestly won't feel right, not having you here. You're, you're not the, not the most verbose, but have incredible insights, and I love talking with you about stuff after board meetings. So, do you have any, got any parting comments, do you want to say anything?
Just wanted to point out that we do have a lot of needs in this village, lighting, streets, fire department. I just want to make sure we all remain focused on the fact that we need to address all of them, and not be dominated by any one of them. Is it my parting words of wisdom?
Thank you much, alright, so with that, appreciate it, we need to set our meeting for next month. I presume it will be, yeah, like, yeah.
In a special meeting also?
Sure, when do you, when do you want to set that for?
I guess, out of respect to, are you wanting to, because we do need three bids, the cost of this, this, I mean, state law is required, attempt to get three bids. If someone says no, then that's our, our third bid, but Melkey has not said no.
He did not say no, he seemed to know a bit about Park Ridge, I mean, they obviously, you know, got all the, you know. He knew what the land mass was, he knew what the structure, you know, so.
So, when do you want to set a meeting for?
Where are we, we're on the sixteenth? It's the sixteenth?
Check the time as well on her calendar.
I'm sorry, what date?
We haven't figured it out.
You haven't figured it out.
Yeah, they haven't. Twenty-first is the meeting.
Uh, next month, the twenty-first would be the meeting.
Would be the meeting.
Alright, so what else we got? Do we want to move a special meeting about the roads out to May, or are we looking maybe into April? How's everybody feeling on that?
Can do it in May.
Thirty, it's a Monday?
I've got a school board meeting.
Twenty-third, oh, that's next week.
Yeah, I've got, we have a bunch of school board meetings, special meetings.
Would a different day work better for you then, like a Tuesday, or a Friday?
Sure, two, how about Tuesday, May eighth?
I have a Montevideo meeting, I may.
Okay.
I have to choose, I guess, I come to this.
What about the first, with that? That's the Tuesday prior.
Yeah, I have something on my calendar, but I don't remember.
Why are we so busy?
Adam, how about the third, this Thursday, the third? Does that work for you?
Five thirty?
Yeah, I presume so. Does that work for everybody, May third?
May third. Yes, it works for me.
The roads or the thirty?
Roads.
Roads.
Okay.
So, the eighth one will win here.
Right, yeah.
So, just for, to be real clear, who's making a motion for a special meeting?
I hope that there be a special meeting to deal with the topic of roads.
Alright, and who's seconding that?
I will second it.
Alright, Stephen, Randy, and everyone that's in favor of having a meeting on May third with regards to roads, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, alright. There we go, May third, alright, motion to adjourn? Oh, the bills, did you, okay, can I make a motion to approve the bills? Randy and Jim, alright, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And, okay, motion to adjourn, Gordon?
Aye, motion to adjourn.
Your last, your last motion, the last motion of the last meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, Steve, alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would comment, it's not necessarily the last meeting, if I decided to read all the minutes, and in April two thousand twelve, you have Elmer making a motion, and he died in February.
So, Randy.
So, Randy and Charon's to come.
For a special meeting, would you want my involvement though?
If you were able to come, I would.
Because I definitely have some suggestions.
For the third?
Yes, so, I know everybody's got stuff they're working on, or whatever.
Yeah, I'm late for school.
Oh, you enjoy that?
My wife needs a raise.
You know, you could go out on strike, like Oklahoma, and, uh, no.
No, she loves her job.
Too much.